Supervisor. She's like, it says you're on mute.
Excellent.
That was so cool.
Looks good. Uh, we should be seeing it here. Let me check.
Recording in progress.
Hello?
All right, our technical problems are solved. We have quorums, so we will call to order the Capitol Area Regional Planning Commission meeting for May 9th. First up is public comment for matters not on the agenda. Is there anybody online or in person who wishes to address the commission on an item not on the agenda?
Will you ask if anyone's having technical issues? I saw one comment about that.
Yes, is anyone having technical issues in viewing remotely? Good to go? All right, we will move forward then to item number three, public hearing on a proposed amendment of the Dane County Water Quality Plan by revising the sewer service area boundary and environmental corridors in the central urban service area town of Middleton, Bala property. First up is the applicant presentation.
All right, and one second here, I'm just pulling up their presentation for them.
If there's anyone online that wants to be promoted to panelist for this item, please use the Zoom function to raise your hand at this time. It's for, just for this item at the moment.
Evening, everyone. My name is Matt Miller. I'm planner for the town, the town of Middleton. Alongside me is town engineer Rod Zubella. We are both from Beerebicker, covering the presentation on this item on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Bala, who is here tonight, as well as his representative, Tim Rail. So, the, a background on the pertinent history with regards to this topic, in 2019 into 2020, an urban service area amendment was pursued and granted for the lands that now constitute the Pioneer Point subdivision within the town of Middleton. Couple things to note with regards to this background history, that urban service area amendment at the time was 127.3 acres. Materials came before this body, June 2019, and late in the summer of 2019, it was approved and the area was extended. The reason we are here tonight is the goal is to bring Mr. Bala's two acre property into the central urban service area. Our staff in reviewing against neighborhood plans, both the town and the ones that were pertinent and adjacent within the city of Madison, we've determined that this proposal is consistent with the town of Middleton's 2040 comprehensive plan, namely it minimizes conflict between incompatible land uses. It encourages commercial development in alignment with where the future land use map portrays that commercial development may take place, and it is consistent with the future land use maps' vision. Intergovernmental cooperation, attorney for the town, Al Reuter, as well as assistant city of Madison attorney Doran Viste, I hope I didn't butcher that, collaborated on the amended sanitary sewer agreement. Sanitary sewer agreement that was in place and was included in the April 8th submission with regards to this topic had the original agreement with regards to the lands in Pioneer Point, but it also had an amendment bringing, saying that this land could be brought into the fold at certain discharge rates and gallons per day. As a note, the amended sanitary sewer agreement, the town of Middleton Town Board approved February 22nd, and city council approved this item on April 16th of this year. Beerebicker staff and city of Madison staff, such as one of the engineers with the city, Mark Motor, wherein collaborated on this effort in terms of data sharing and other approaches. So, a summary on the land use existing, there is one single family residence on this two acre parcel. Proposed land use would be commercial. The zoning, this current parcel will be transitioned, rezoned from agricultural, agricultural transition AT5 prior to development on that parcel. Natural resources, on this two acre parcel, there is no surface water present, limited manmade steep slopes. And when I say that, it was primarily the ditching that is along Mineral Point Road. No mapped environmental corridors are present. One of the exhibits from the submission on the screen portrays, in a slightly darker color, the environmental corridors that are in or around, in and around the Pioneer Point subdivision. There are no mapped environmental corridors president, present on this two acre site. And similarly, within this exhibit, a drainage way is on the adjacent parcel to the east, but it is not on this two acre site itself. Utilities and stormwater management and having, and collaborating with Mark Motor at the city of Madison. As a note, the amended sanitary sewer agreement caps the discharge at 750 gallons per acre per day on this two acre site. This is 1,500 gallons per day. That's the equivalent of around a little over one gallon per minute. Peak loading using a peak hour factor of four in our calculations suggests, would suggest a maximum of 6,000 gallons per day from what could be discharged from this two acre parcel. Couple notes, just in terms of the engineering and the adjacent facilities, the pioneer of the, the pipe underneath Pioneer Road is a 21 inch diameter pipe with a design capacity of 3,187 gallons per minute. Underneath Pioneer Point subdivision, there is a 10 inch pipe. Its design capacity is around 736 gallons per minute. Wastewater currently flows to the Midtown Lift Station, which has a design capacity of 650 gallons per minute. And in our consultation with Mark Motor at the city, he noted that the peak flow for that facility in the 2023 calendar year was 412 gallons per minute. That's a simple way of saying, at the, at the most intense day in 2023, the, the lift station experienced around two thirds of its capacity. The volume even at peak loading from the site of the equivalent of four gallons per minute would be well within the design capacity of the Midtown Lift Station. With further regard to utilities and stormwater management, the water source on this site would ultimately be a private well, depth estimated at 150 to 400 feet in depth. Stormwater management on the site would consist of stormwater retention or bioinfiltration facilities to meet the peak flow requirements. One of the provisions from the original sanitary sewer agreement for Pioneer Point was that the lowest building opening, a minimum opening elevation would be established at an elevation above the 500 year storm event. This provision would control for what development may occur on Mr. Bala's parcel as well. And these facilities, the stormwater facilities, would be subject to future development approvals such as site plan approval by the town board of the town of Middleton. As a note, this also was from the April 8th submission, both of these were exhibits included, map E as well as map G. Map G portrays the existing utilities, the sanitary mains that run underneath the Pioneer Point subdivision, and the map E to the right portrays, as a hand sketch, what the potential connection could be from the existing sanitary sewer facilities within Pioneer Point to Mr. Bala's property. And with that, that concludes, that concludes our presentation slides.
Thank you. Next, we will open the public hearing to take testimony from attendees. Do we have anybody registered or indicating they wish to speak on this item?
We have, Steve Glass has raised his hand and should be able to speak, I believe.
Mr. Glass, please go ahead.
I'm with the Dane County Working Group of 350 Wisconsin, and I don't really have any comments, but I do have a couple of questions if I'd be permitted to ask those.
You may air your questions and then during discussion, maybe we'll get them addressed.
Thank you. I really wanted to learn more about the Dane County Water Quality Plan and how it works, and so my two general questions are, what criteria are used to evaluate the appropriateness of a particular project? And then, I guess, number two, how does removing acreage from the Dane County Water Quality Plan actually enhance and improve and protect Dane County water quality?
All right, thank you. Do we have any other registrants wishing to speak? Then I will close the public hearing, and we will move forward to commissioner questions and discussion. Commissioner Richson.
I'd just like to have this reflected in the minutes, but I checked with the CARPSY legal counsel, John St. Peter, and he advised that I do not have any legal or ethical obligation to recuse myself because I or a family member do not have a financial interest in these questions, so I'd just like that reflected in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion from commissioners? Go any once? Yes, Commissioner Murphy.
I just wanted to sort of touch on the questions from the public briefly. They are more general questions and not necessarily tied, I mean, you can, through the process tie them to this specific example as long with, with many others, but I don't know if any staff might want to comment on how you could find out more information or how someone could find out how to answer these questions? Kind of the general Dane County Water Quality Plan and criteria, it's online and, you know, reading through, but is there a resource to help, you know?
Right.
Someone generally find out answers on how that changes?
Thank you. And we receive a staff report on an amendment application at our next meeting, and so that may be an opportunity to see how the amendment process proceeds, but if there's a place we would point them to on our website.
I guess just on our website, if you do want to just learn more about the Dane County Water Quality Plan in general, and a lot of its interworkings and things that kind of are tied into it, you can find that through our, our CARPSY website. There's a, its own dedicated website for this matter. I can't tell you exactly how off memory, but you can get to it from the CARPSY website, and there's a lot of good, good information on there. Generally speaking, a lot of the, you know, kind of to the second question, looking at the, the water quality, some of that comes from statute 281 dot 1.5, I believe, and 281, or excuse me, 283.83, so those would be two other areas a person could look at to learn more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner McKeever.
There we go. And I didn't catch the, the member of the public his name, but if he wanted to give me a call as a commissioner, I would be glad to talk to him on the phone and see if I could answer some of his questions. So, I think my number's on the website, or the staff can give it to you. I'm glad to try and answer questions like that.
All right, thank you.
We had a written comment just noting that they couldn't hear Commissioner Richson, and I will just repeat for the benefit of people online that Commissioner Richson was affirming that she checked on conflict of interest issues because this is in the town of Middleton, and affirmed that there is not a conflict of interest, and she does not need to recuse, recuse herself from this, this particular item.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, we will move forward. Thank you for presenting. We'll see you next one. Next up is our consent agenda. As always, if there's an item the commissioner wishes to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration, they may so move. Otherwise, seek motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Crombie, a move to approve.
Motion by Crombie, second by Terrell. Is there a discussion on the consent agenda? Commissioner McKeever.
I just have a question. Unfortunately, I missed the executive committee meeting, and I apologize for that. What is the nature of the mapping services that we're going to provide? What, to map, what, what are we mapping?
We don't know yet. It is an open-ended, no particular commitment in, in hours or dollar amount arrangement whereby they can request our assistance, and we will provide it as requested.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move forward to item five, amending the Dane County Water Quality Plan by revising...
Did we approve the minutes? Did I miss that? Did, did I just miss the minutes approval?
It's part of the consent agenda.
It is, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Amending the Dane County Water Quality Plan by revising the sewer service area boundary and environmental corridors in the Marshall Urban Service Area, number 2303, Village of Marshall, East Side. And we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the room? Doesn't look like it, or online wishing to speak?
There aren't people online, I'm not sure if they want to speak at this time. I can promote anyone that raises their hands for that purpose.
And seeing none, we will move forward with the overview of consistency with state and local standards.
One second, please.
All right, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. So, good evening, my name is Nick Bauer. If those of you in the room know me, but for anyone online, senior environmental engineer at CARPSY, talking about the proposed amendment to Dane County Water Quality Plan for the Marshall Urban Service Area. So, as a refresher, this is the proposed East Side area, we're calling it, brought forward by the Village of Marshall. There was a public hearing last month at the April meeting. There were no members of the public commenting either for or against the amendment there. This one theme recently, it has two sub-areas of the proposed overall amendment, including a small area within the Little America's amusement park. Pretty hard to see on the screen there, but kind of the bottom left corner of that map outlined in red. That's an area that contains a couple, some existing rides and some existing outbuildings, part of the, the established theme park. Basically, just cleaning up the urban service area. There's no additional sewer service or additional development activity happening there. Again, it's just kind of a cleanup. The, the primary piece is the, the northern sub-area located just east of the existing America's Dream subdivision and south of the railroad tracks there. And then along the Monisha, or Monashaw River, I believe that's the correct pronunciation. Is that right? Okay. Monashaw, thank you. And then, in total, we've got the stats there up like normal, about 180 acres in total, take away existing development and proposed environmental corridors, and you're left with about 86 acres of net development, or developable area, rather. So, looking at this amendment and its consistency with the, the standards, wastewater here is considered met. There is sufficient, sufficient existing or planned capacity within the village wastewater collection and treatment system. State stormwater standards are surpassed, again, as we know Dane County is more protective in, in those regards. As far as county and local standards, they are met here. The development team will be meeting all baseline requirements for peak rate control through the 200 year storm, TSS or sediment control, infiltration or volume control for, to match 90% of the pre-development stand volume, as well as recharge thermal and oil and grease. The environmental corridors on this one will be delineated in accordance with our policies and criteria adopted in the Dane County Water Quality Plan. This includes proposed stormwater management areas, about 10 acres, park areas, about nine acres, and then the buffers, the areas and the buffers for the 1% annual chance flood plain, as well as the Monashaw River and its tributary running to the north, and then some wetlands along, mostly along that corridor. Of the 26 acres mapped as stewardship areas here, those are mapped for potentially restorable wetlands, hydro soils, and the 0.2% annual chance flood plain, and also internally drained areas. Seven of those acres are proposed to be designated as environmental corridor. Additionally, the village and development team have recognized the old growth woodlands located kind of on the northern third of the site, and they've taken a proactive approach to, towards preservation of this area. Specifically, they have agreed to conduct a detailed tree inventory within that northern woodlot to identify mature trees and work, work with CARPSY and the development team to preserve as many of those trees as practicable. Another proactive measure is to plant native vegetations in the farmed wetland area within kind of that central horseshoe or kind of that central lobe area, with, you know, with, with the kind of long-term goal that, that would aid towards restoration of that farmed wetland area. So, all that together, environmental corridors are considered surpassed here as far as meeting the requirements. And then for recommendations, the first is, sorry, I've got a bad old note here, I'll go off the slide here. The first is to pursue restoration or planting of native vegetation. Within the rest of the farmed wetland areas, there's, there's additional farmed wetland areas along Monashaw River that we're recommending, they kind of do a similar practice over there as well. And then, as, as far as, taken the recommendation by the Wisconsin Historical Society, they are still working on their final assessment. They didn't give us an answer to say which way this would go, but should WHS come up with something, the recommendation is to require an archaeological survey for the full amendment area to, to find out what's out there and take any appropriate protection measures. And so, with the consistency to water quality standards in mind, and as outlined in your Water Quality Management Letter, number 2303, in your packets, staff suggests a recommendation for approval of this proposed amendment to the Marshall Urban Service Area. So, that's the presentation. I can take any questions.
Any questions from commissioners for staff on the presentation? Commissioner Richson.
Did I hit the right one now? I just want to compliment on the proactive tree survey and looking for high value trees with a goal of trying to preserve them. I think that's really good.
Thank you. Other discussion from commissioners or questions? Otherwise, we move to item C, consideration of approval of management letter 2403, 2303, sorry.
Hampton will move approval of CARPSY's management letter 2303.
Hampton will move approval of CARP-C's Management Letter 2303 as presented.
Second, Richardson.
Motion by Hampton, second by Richardson. Discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? That letter is approved. Thank you. We will move forward to item six, amending the Dane County Water Quality Plan by revising the sewer service area boundary and environmental corridors in the Central Urban Service Area, number 2402, City of Madison, High Point, and Raymond Road.
All right, thank you again. Nick here again. I won't reintroduce myself, but switching over to the City of Madison, another amendment there. And this one is the High Point Raymond Road Amendment Area located kind of generally on the southwest side of the city, kind of on the edge of the city of Verona, as well as Town of Verona. There are roughly 240 acres in total, 75 acres of existing development right-of-way, 65 acres environmental corridor proposed, roughly 100 acres of net developable area. I should mention too, this also had a public hearing last month. There were no members of the public commenting either for or against this amendment. Also, two sub-areas on this one, generally the larger area north of Raymond Road, and then the other area east of South Pleasant Valley Road. The northern sub-area is partially already developed with low-density residential, but then the remainder of that area, you can kind of see what is, you know, open. That's slated for future residential development. Then the southwestern sub-area is largely slated for environmental corridor as shown on the map, but with the portion straddling Raymond Road planned for future commercial development. So, looking at the consistency overview for this current amendment area, wastewater is considered met. We are in MMSD's district, so the Nine Springs Wastewater Treatment Plan has capacity as well as the City of Madison's collection system infrastructure. State standards are again considered met here. County and local standards are more protective and supersede. The county and local standards are considered met on this one. The development team is again meeting all baseline requirements, peak rate control through 200-year storm, TSS control, infiltration, volume control for 90%, stay-on, recharge, thermal control, oil and grease. Environmental corridors will be delineated in accordance with the policies and criteria in the Dane County Water Quality Plan. This includes proposed stormwater management in park areas, as well as protection areas associated with the Badger Mill Creek, which runs through the northern edge of that southwestern sub-area. Of the 48 acres mapped as stewardship area within the USA, hydro soils, steep slopes, ice age, ice age trail corridor, and then a natural resource area boundary, approximately 43 acres of those will be placed into environmental corridor. So, overall, we would consider that this amendment to be surpassing the requirements. As for additional recommendations to protect and improve water quality and environmental resources on this one, the first one on your screen there is to seek to provide 100% stay-on volume control. That would be taking that 90% stay-on I mentioned as the baseline, ratcheting it up to 100% stay-on. That is for the average annual rainfall series, and that is for the development area within the Morse Pond sub watershed, which is a closed internally draining basin. So, that in effect would just apply to the southwestern sub-area. The next one there is to conduct a tree inventory of the existing old growth woodlands prior to any land disturbances, and work with CARP-C to preserve high-value trees. Those old growth woodlands are predominantly in that area of existing residential development. Don't anticipate any disturbance there. Southwest area, just about all that old growth woodlands area is already in proposed corridor, so if they're not proposing to disturb any of it, that's not required. It's just if they wanted to do anything in there, we want the survey, so, or the tree inventory. The next one is just to continue participation in some regional water quality initiatives, Wisconsin Saltwise, Mam Swap, and Yahara Winds. Then encourage removal of invasive plants and use of native plantings. We have the rusty patch bumblebee out here, so we know those are the things that little critter likes. And then, lastly, request a formal endangered resources review by DNR and take any appropriate mitigation or protection measures if certain species are found. During our preliminary screening, we did have a couple hit, so we know something's out there in the vicinity, so. And with that, and consistency of the water quality standards in mind, in the Water Quality Management Letter 2402, we suggest recommendation for approval of this proposed amendment to the Central Urban Service Area. That's it for the presentation. I can again take questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on the presentation? Commissioner McKeever.
Nick, could you clarify for me the stormwater detention on the northern portion, the part that's along between Raymond Road and Midtown Road? What's the stormwater detention there?
The stormwater plan as of now is conceptual. We didn't have a defined plan submitted as part of this, but it is known that the development site will be designed to meet all current stormwater management regulations. So, it's specific to detention. They would be looking at peak rate control for all storms up to the 200-year storm event.
Would the stormwater facilities then be environmental corridor?
Typically, yes. Yep.
So, does that mean they are likely to be located in the areas on map 11 that are already marked, that are proposed environmental corridor? But that... I find that map a little confusing. Because of the coloring, I guess, that...
Yeah, generally, they proposed environmental corridor for a development such as this. That's where they're putting their proposed environmental corridor, is where it's lining up with their proposed stormwater. Again, they don't have that level of detail in their engineering design done yet, so those areas marked and shown as proposed environmental corridor, those could and very likely will be adjusted in the future. Yeah.
In which case, they would come back before us for those adjustments to the environmental corridor?
No, likely not. There's nothing considered environmentally sensitive in that northern area there, so it would just be considered a minor change to the environmental corridor, something we as staff would handle just in our day-to-day operations.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions yet? Commissioner Tischler.
Yeah, just a question. You mentioned the tree inventory. I just wanted to clarify here. Are you talking tree inventory for both public spaces and residential?
It would only come into play for areas where there are proposing disturbance. So, the existing residential areas where there is tree growth, we're not anticipating any inventory being done there. And just to preface, that was just a recommendation. We as staff say this is something you guys should do. There's no requirement that they do anything with this. The more likely scenario that I see and why we added it as a recommendation is in that southwest sub-area, maybe connecting from Raymond Road to the Ice Age Trail corridor. Maybe they want to start cutting some local paths and, you know, city trails to connect, to add some connectivity there. That's where we would say, hey, you guys should go see what's out there for trees, make your path zig and zag rather than jog and jig, right? Like, let's avoid these trees, in very technical terms there.
So. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner McKeever.
Nick, I just want to come back to map 11, just so I understand it. The southwest area has proposed environmental corridor, and then it's colored as though it's a stewardship area.
That's underneath the mapping. That's just showing you that's what you was trying-
Yeah, go ahead, Melissa, take that.
Yeah, so that, the stewardship area on those maps, we just show like what is mapped, you know, outside of the current USA boundaries as stewardship area and protection areas. So, stewardship's not required environmental corridor, but that kind of shows what Nick was talking about, where there was some acreage that was added, you know, that of stewardship area that is going to be within areas for environmental corridor. So, that's great that they're going to be, you know, mapped as environmental corridor. They're proposed to be anyways.
I'm still confused. What's a stewardship area in this context? I mean, it's a great idea, but what is it?
There are areas that are not legally protected, like the, you know, wetlands and their buffers, and streams and their buffers, things like that. So, there are items that we talk about, like hydro soils, potentially restorable wetlands, the 500-year floodplain, the Ice Age Trail corridor is another one that we map and have on our online mapping that are areas that would be beneficial to include in environmental corridor that we would recommend be included, but they're not legally protected or required to be.
I guess I'm, I don't recall seeing stewardship area on a map previously, so I'm-
Yeah, it's been on there for about a year or two now.
Yeah, but it is a relatively new term, though. It's something that we're working into. It's kind of come, came out of the RDF, the concepts for stewardship and protection areas, those kind of came through there. We've done some mapping on it with the update to the environmental corridors report we're working on. We're trying to push those elements and those ideas forward so that, you know, every other person like you isn't like, what's a stewardship area, right? So, it's a relatively new term. We're trying to push forward to really, you know, get in the limelight.
All right. I think that's great. Just trying to understand it. It doesn't have legal protection, but we're trying to, as I said earlier, it's a value in the RDF that we want to promote.
That's exactly right. And in this case, they are doing exactly what we want and putting it in that protected environmental corridor.
Okay, thank you. You clarified my question.
Thank you. The questions for staff on the presentation? Hearing none, we'll move forward to consideration of Management Letter 2402.
I'll make a motion to approve CARP-C Management Letter 2403, Central USA, recommending to the Wisconsin DNR an amendment to the Dane County Water Quality Plan in the Central Urban Service Area.
And friendly amendment, we're on 2402. 2403 is coming next.
I'd like to number seven. I'm very sorry. Yes, 2402.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second by Murphy.
Motion by Richardson, second by Murphy. Any discussion on the letter 2402? Hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That letter is approved. And now, we move to amending the Dane County Water Quality Plan by revising the sewer service area boundary and environmental corridors in the Central Urban Service Area, number 2403, City of Madison, Felon Road. Back to you, Nick.
All right, I'm back. Last one, I think. Oh, we'll see. Sorry, one more second here. All right. The other City of Madison proposes urban service area amendment to the central, to the Central Urban Service Area. This one is called the Felon Road area over on the far east side of the city. There is approximately 81 total acres, 12 acres of existing development right-of-way, 31 acres of proposed environmental corridor, resulting in 38 acres of net developable area. This also had a public hearing last month in April. There were no members of the public commenting either for or against this amendment. And looking at the totality of it and the consistency with the standards, wastewater, same as the other City of Madison, there is existing collection and treatment capacity within the existing systems of the City of Madison and MMSD. State stormwater standards are also, or again, surpassed here and superseded by county and local standards. The county and local standards on this one are again considered met here. They're meeting all the baseline requirements we went through there, peak rate infiltration, TSS, recharge, thermal, oil and grease. And then, for environmental corridors, they again will be delineated in accordance with the policies and criteria of the Dane County Water Quality Plan. For this one, this includes stormwater management areas and park areas. There are effectively no stewardship or protection areas mapped within this area, and so the environmental corridor requirements are considered met here. And as for recommendations on this one here, we have same recommendation for the tree inventory. We do have some, a little area of old growth, kind of within the central part of that amendment area, so we are recommending a tree inventory prior to any land disturbances and to work with CARP-C to preserve any high-value trees to the extent feasible. The next one is to continue participation in these regional water quality initiatives, Wisconsin Saltwise, Mam Swap, and Yahara Winds. Next is to encourage removal of invasive plants and use of native plantings due, again, to the presence of the, or likely presence of the endangered rusty patch bumblebee. And then, lastly, again, to request a formal endangered resources review by DNR, take any appropriate mitigation and protection measures if certain species are found. Again, based on the preliminary screening we as staff have done, and there were hits in the area, so. And again, with the consistency to water quality standards in mind, we as staff have outlined in Water Quality Management, number 2403, we have staff have recommended approval of the proposed amendment to the Central Urban Service Area. That's it for this presentation. I can field questions again.
Thank you. Questions for staff on the presentation? Seeing and hearing none, we will move forward to consideration of CARP-C Management Letter 2403.
Murphy will move approval?
Second.
Yes, motion by Murphy, second by Hampton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That letter is approved. Thank you. Thanks, Nick. We'll move forward to item eight, recommendation to discontinue the executive chair role. And as discussed at our prior meeting, now that we have an executive director on board and fully active in our agency's operations, we no longer have a need for an executive chairperson, so we are proposing to return the title of the executive chairperson back to being merely the commission chairperson. Discussion or motion?
I'll move approval.
Richardson, second.
Motion by McKeever, second by Richardson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a date for effective when?
I think it's July 1 in the motion.
Okay.
So, call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next up is CARP-C 2024 Budget Amendment Proposal and Preliminary 2025 Draft Budget. And our staff presentation, Jason.
Thank you. Now you can hear me online, which is, at this point, mostly just marine. I've got some things to share on screen from the packet. Before I do that, I just want to note that this process, this effort, is turning out to be as expected for me, which means the most challenging thing of my new role. And not just because being responsible for the finances of the organization is new to me, but also because we turned over in the past year, the executive director, the administrative services manager, and our accountant. And so, as we have been- have been, um, as Tony and I have been getting our arms around, how does this system work? We have been learning at each step of the way. It has been very iterative. Every week we are asking questions of each other and then digging and working with our accountant to find the answers. And so we, we appreciate your, your patience and your understanding that, um, we don't have all the answers right away. Um, and as an example of that, uh, in case any of you looked at the packet prior to today, uh, we have updated it a couple times as we have learned, continued to learn things. So, uh, we had conversation about the 2024 budget amendment at the executive committee, uh, meeting on Monday, and, um, David asked some questions about the, uh, you know, what else besides the few things that we had focused on at the time is changing so far this year, um, has, has changed enough that it's worth talking about and addressing in the amendment? And I said, well, it's, it's a little bit hard for us to tell that. I'm not sure if we can, um, if we can tell a complete answer before, um, yet, because we're still figuring some stuff out. However, we have figured some more things out, and that's why I revised the packet and revised that proposal, and I'll be explaining that, um, from the revised version that we posted just this morning. So, uh, if you looked at it before today, um, the, uh, both the 2024 amendment and the descriptions of it in the presentation here, um, have been updated a couple of times, both yesterday and today, as we've been refining, as we've been answering questions for ourselves and improving it. What I'm going to do here is go in from the, the packet. Uh, what we have in the packet is the, um, a, a single PDF page describing the changes to the budget, and then two different forms for the 2024 budget, and then two different forms of, uh, description in kind of a similar table format, talking about the 2025 budget. Um, and I'm going to skip past those and get to the presentation, which hits all the important points that are, that are within those, those tables. Before we talk about the specific, uh, the specifics of the 24 and 25 budgets, I want to just, uh, give a brief presentation here to talk about some of, some historical data and, and things that we're, we're seeing that are context to what we're, uh, what we're talking about in a budgeting standpoint, uh, right now. Uh, this slide is, uh, is showing the, the Dane County population, which, uh, and I don't know if this is reality or a data artifact, uh, but in 2022, the data showed that the county population, uh, made a significant jump, but that's part of a larger, longer-term trend. Whether strictly accurate or not, it is generally accurate and part of a longer-term trend that, um, population has been growing at a fairly rapid clip. And anecdotal discussions with folks reinforce how we're all, all the communities are, uh, encountering and dealing with the development impacts of those, those changes. The, the housing crisis, as many are referring to it, um, is of course related directly to that. The, uh, value of property in the county has also been going up and more quickly than, uh, than population growth recently. Uh, just to be clear, this graph doesn't start at zero. It starts at, uh, 40 billion. Um, back in 2007 and up through 2015, total property value in the county, uh, was between roughly between 40 and 50 billion. And in the, uh, the 10 years since then, uh, through 24, we're, uh, we've pretty much doubled the value of property in the county. Um, a lot of that, of course, is, uh, the appreciation, uh, the increase in value of existing property, of existing development, but, uh, there is of, of course, an element of, um, exit, of new, new development that's factored into that. We shared this graph earlier during our strategic planning meeting, showing the relationship, uh, between our, uh, our levy as an organization, um, which, uh, is, um, a bit under, uh, it's about 1.135 million for 2024, I think. And, uh, relative to that are the percentage of the equalized value for the county that that levy represents. And it has been dropping from the, uh, point zero, uh, 0.17% cap, um, and it's down near around, uh, 0.12% right now. This is a different look at, uh, at, at the data that puts our, uh, levy in the context of population. And I thought this was an, an interesting, uh, an interesting look at things. So the, the blue lines are population, uh, and, and zero is at the bottom, and, you know, we're, we're right at 600,000, uh, next, uh, this year. And I made a guess, you see there's a 2025 line there, I made, made a guess that we're going to be somewhere around 610,000. We've been seeing, uh, for most of these years, roughly 10,000 new residents a year in the county. And relative to, uh, that, I tried to chart out, uh, and I used $2, $2023, how much is our levy representing per person in the county? And it had for a while been hovering, um, around $2 per person, per year, uh, for our, uh, for our levy, um, and dropped more recently, uh, through a comp, predominantly through, um, population growth, and has come up again a little bit, but is just a bit lower than it, than it has been over the prior decade. This is another graph we saw earlier this afternoon, uh, looking at the relationship, uh, between our levy, our total budget, and the, uh, tax levy as a percentage of equalized value. So we, we saw that earlier. Uh, this one shows our budget relative, in the context of our staffing. And so the orange line here, uh, is, uh, has its indicator on the right side, uh, showing that we are at, uh, we have for a while been at eight staff. We are currently at, uh, nine full-time staff. And we are talking about amendment to the budget tonight, um, predominantly because we are proposing to convert our current, uh, LTE part-time staff person and our current intern to be full-time staff. And, uh, if approved, um, through the budgeting process would take us to 11. And so just showing you, putting that in context of what our staffing levels have been at, uh, since, uh, CARPSY was established. So, uh, that's a bit of background information. So let me talk first about the budget amendment, and this, this item is an action item tonight. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that you'll, you'll be comfortable moving ahead with amendment to the 24 budget. And, uh, we will then talk about the 25 budget, which is not an action item. It is a first draft, uh, that will be the basis for your, uh, your, your vote to recommend our levy to be certified to the county in July. And so that'll be an action item at the June meeting. So talking about the 24 budget, uh, the reason that we started talking about amendment to begin with is because, uh, we want, we, we would like to hire these, uh, two existing staff full-time, and that has a budget impact, and we'd like that to, uh, to be approved. As we look at, uh, how the budget is playing out so far, and we're, you know, a good, good share of the way into the year now, there are some other things that vary from the budget that are worth pointing out. And, uh, as long as we're doing it, we will acknowledge those changes and describe to you the impact on our financial situation. So here's what, uh, we see changing, that the recommended amended budget would incorporate and reflect. Uh, we have additional revenue that we hadn't been counting on in the approved budget. And as a reminder, the 24 budget, that is the approved budget, was amended in December. And so it was December when you last saw this enacted on approval of the budget. Uh, we have some, we have additional revenue from our water quality work, uh, from, uh, the Saltwise program, from sewer extensions, uh, from sewer extensions, urban service area reviews, uh, from interest on, um, funds that are in, in the bank, and from the South Side Tree Project. And, and I'll show you the specifics of what those amounts are, but, uh, that's where, uh, additional revenue is coming from. And then additional costs are associated with, uh, those staff changes that I talked about. Uh, this is not a big item, but, um, we realized that we don't have anything as an organization with our logo on it, on shirts or on gear to help tell people who we are, and felt that there are points when that's a useful thing to have.
Merch.
Merch, sure. Swag is what I say, but merch is fine. Um, uh, so that's not a big item, but I, I figure it's worth mentioning inclusion. And, and the two other big ones that aren't changes in any way, but I don't, I can't find that they're represented anywhere in the budget, and I think we need to acknowledge them. One is Connect Search, which is the firm that Tanya was hired through. So Tanya was not an employee of CARPSY for her first three, four months. She was a, uh, she was a contract, uh, a contract employee through Connect Search. And so, uh, for the first, uh, the first few weeks of the year, uh, her payroll cost came through Connect Search. And more importantly, when we converted her to our employee, um, per our contract with Connect Search, there was a fee there, uh, in effect, a finder's fee. You know, you helped us find someone, and then we hired them. They get a fee for that. And that's just, that's how that, that, uh, that system works. So, uh, that's about, and I'll get into the numbers in a minute, but that's an important one. And then our strategic planning assistance, I can't see that in the budget anywhere, and, uh, that's a fairly substantial piece, too, and that, too, should be reflected in the budget. So what are the dollar amounts? Um, in, in total, we're looking at that all those categories amount to 52,000 in increased revenue. Uh, the increased costs for the changes that I described to add those, uh, those additional staff, um, it would have an effect of 37,700 in net increase. Uh, the two areas of contract service, so Connect Search and strategic planning together are 57,500. So, um, that's kind of a big chunk that really should have been in there and, and wasn't. And then the merch, uh, is just $1,650. The net of all of that is, uh, that we would end up, right now, the budget per what you adopted, it was balanced. And, uh, if you approve the, uh, amended budget as proposed, we would have a deficit for the year. If it plays out as we're looking at it right now, we would have a deficit for the year of $45,000, and that would, um, be in effect a drawdown of our operating reserve. Our operating reserve as of the beginning of the year was $840,000, and is roughly, uh, half of our annual budget, and, uh, that represents 5.4% of that reserve. And so, um, it would be, if it plays out that way, it would be drawing that down. We can, uh, we can look at the, I can, I can quote certain numbers from the, uh, the table, which is the, the thing that you would actually be adopting, uh, describing the specific dollar amounts, um, in more detail from what I described as a kind of a higher level. But, uh, what questions do commissioners have?
So, uh, given the fact that CARPSY is a public entity with public tax dollars, um, first of all, I would caution you against swag. That doesn't leave a good impression to the public. And secondly, um, personally, um, I'm, whatever we vote on tonight, that to me needs to be taken out because I think you need a legal ethics opinion. Uh, I know there's some exception for uniforms, and then there can be some personal tax implications. We looked at this issue in our town. Um, and I think it needs to be handled properly in an ethical manner so that nobody has any surprises. So that's my comment and my request that you have legal counsel do an opinion.
Yes, Commissioner McKeever.
I just have a question. I want to go back to, uh, maybe this is a cautionary note. Jason, you, you said that the information posted today was different than was posted earlier? Um, is that on the 25 or the 24 budget?
The 24. And, and the difference is that we added in more categories of things that we, we dove in to look at other things that, to see how they compared to the budget, and if it was a significant enough difference that we thought we were going to not, that we're going to be off the budget at the end of the year, we incorporated more of those.
So you, you changed some of the numbers in the spreadsheet?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I don't know the answer to this, but I want to be sure that you're consistent with the public notice requirements for meetings. Typically, there's 24-hour notice, and whether this, you could amend it like this, uh, in the short term, I'm not sure. But it's worth checking with John to find out if you're okay in terms of the public notice on this, if you made changes less than 24 hours before the meeting. You just, you might have to come back and do it again. That's what I'm saying.
This was your notice.
Yeah, the, the agenda's the notice, but I, I just don't know the, I don't know this area of the law well enough, except I do know, once without, on city council, everybody else got fined except me because I raised a cautionary note. So.
Otherwise, it's a two-hour minimum notice.
This is saying it's a two-hour notice if you change it. So if that's correct, then we're fine. I just, I just, I just don't want you to get in trouble. I don't want, you have to come back and do it again. Just, I'm just being cautious.
Al, I'll just add to this. Um, if we're doing fine-tuning adjustments to our budget based upon actuals that are coming in through the year, it isn't something that we actually have to do a budget amendment for. I just asked Jason to provide some context for us to be considering, uh, the change that he's proposing, which was more significant, that we felt was a budget amendment-worthy item, which was converting, uh, the LTE position and the, uh, intern positions to full-time staff. So the rest of the number is more context for us in, in considering, uh, the, the main motion, which is to amend the budget for the purpose of, of changing those positions to full-time staff.
Make sure we know that we're clean.
Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
I would also like to request, I went back and looked at some agendas, um, because I was looking at the Leebwall Consulting Agreement, just in the future, um, because I think that might have been put in a consent agenda. The way we do it, and I think it's a good process, whenever anything is going to cost us money, we ask, or it's just offered by staff, this is in the budget, or this is not in the budget, or this will exceed the budgeted amount, just so we know, especially if it's in a consent agenda item, you know, it's like there's nothing controversial there, but to avoid, knowing in the moment and to avoid any amendments going forward. I understand this situation, but.
Agree. And I think the, where the, uh, Leebwall Consulting number mismatch came from is that it was budgeted for last year. And then we delayed the process. So that surplus carried forward rather than it being in this year's budget, and they didn't amend to transfer it to this year's budget. But that's, yeah.
And that's a good example of, uh, a, a challenge that we've been facing is, you know, that institutional memory is, uh, not in our memory, uh, to, to realize that. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, if I could address Commissioner Richardson's concern about the, uh, the, the gear, um, I'll, I'll acknowledge a, a poor choice of naming for it. Um, but clarify that what we're talking about is, um, a budget of $150 per staff with the request that staff get a, um, computer backpack, if they don't already have one, to transport their laptops. And many did not have a bag that would, uh, safely reliably move, uh, transport their backpacks, and to do that with, if, if CARPSY is buying it, to have the CARPSY logo on those, on those bags. And then to get at least one, um, or, um, one or more shirts that have the CARPSY logo on them. And again, for us to be seen as, with our affiliation when we are out in public. So, um, you know, I guess I'd appreciate any other So I guess I'd appreciate any other commissioners weighing in on whether they feel that that's something of concern. To me, it's kind of a fundamental thing that need not be anywhere near any sort of ethics issue.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and it's very rational, but this is a government public entity and its tax dollars, and I really recommend that you ask the CARPSY attorney because there may be some legal implications. I was surprised to know that there were as many, and tax, potential tax implications, personal tax. So I just, it's a word of caution.
All right, thank you. Other discussion on the proposed 2024 budget amendment?
We have someone in the audience that raised a hand?
Yes.
I have allowed Tom Matthews to talk.
Mr. Matthews, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just regarding Commissioner McKeever's point, I checked the CARPSY bylaws for a budget amendment. 30-day notice public hearing is required, so I would encourage you to refer to bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess the question we really have is terminology of amendment or adjustment, and we may have run awry of terminology issue here. That may be something also worth contacting the attorney on. That's the issue where, again, we have less institutional knowledge in budgeting with Steve's departure, certainly.
Yes, Commissioner Murphy.
When does the internships generally align with the school year? Because many of them are completing their education. Is that the case here? Are there still hours left for these positions, or have they used them all?
So our, we have right now, one of the people in question is an intern, and his school is finished this week, I think. And I think we can continue, as is my main concern there, is that there be enough confidence about how we're proceeding such that he doesn't seek employment elsewhere in the meantime. The same is true to some extent with our LTE employee who has two jobs right now. She works part-time with us and part-time with the City of Madison. And our intent, our hope was to hire full-time our intern later this month and to hire our LTE later in June, based on what was workable to each of them.
I appreciate that. I guess I would pass on the feedback that I would be in support of continuing this when we get, you know, the notification through. So I would just like to voice my support for continuing to expand our capacity by moving these two people to the full-time position.
Thank you.
David, where are you in light of the comment from Mr. Massey in terms of procedure? I think, I agree with Commissioner that this is, I have no objection with the substance of this. I think it's great. I just want to make sure we're following the procedure so that we don't get nicked by somebody who's complaining.
Right. I was trying to do a search here on the bylaws to see what the definition of an amendment is, but reality is that we've agended it as an amendment.
Yeah, and I think the way the calendar falls, we should be able to get that amendment posted with the 30-day notice for the June meeting, which is the 13th of June. And I guess we'll have some separate conversation about how we handle all these individuals in the meantime, from an employment standpoint. And generally speaking, you know, issues of hiring and firing are within the executive director's purview, and so we'll give that some thought as to how we balance everything in this situation.
You're not doing any objection from anybody to what you're proposing.
Right. And we may learn that we need to have some, a little bit more specificity in terms of what constitutes a budget amendment and what is within the jurisdiction of the executive director, as staffing is, what is a level of change that requires, that triggers a budget amendment. So we can report on that at the next executive committee meeting as well and to the commission as a whole after that.
Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
Does CARPSY have a internal purchasing policy with a dollar amount for staff authority? That's normally what you do.
Right. Yeah, I believe there is. We haven't had an executive director, though, so I couldn't tell you whether that policy is reflective of having that position staffed or whether it was reflective of having an agency director and et cetera.
Yeah, I would say from a purchasing standpoint, and I can't quote for you exactly what it says, I think it does say something about that. If it's substantially within or close to budget, it's ours to deal with, and only if it's going to significantly change or exceed the budget would we want to come back and amend the budget for that purpose. I'd also make a distinction between purchasing and hiring, which are, you know, each handled But I concur with the direction that we're at it here on postponing a vote on this until we have noticed it as a public hearing for that purpose.
We have a motion to.
Motion to table to our next meeting.
Thank you. Motion by Hampton. Second?
Second, Richardson.
Second by Richardson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? We'll move forward.
Two. We're still on the budget?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Because we're now talking about the '25 budget.
Yes.
And I will, once I get this working again, get back into my presentation here. So preliminary '25 budget draft, I identified kind of themes of what we're looking at here. I would say the themes of the budget, kind of what goes into it, are an increase in staffing capacity to meet needs identified by partners across the region, such as JS Assistance, Housing Unit Tracking and Mapping, Support for Community Conversations about infill, et cetera. And we're not, the increase we're talking about is the continuation of the two staff that we were just talking about changing in '24. So not looking at additional growth beyond that at this time. The assumption is we would get to 11 staff and be at that level for 2025. To do that, the way that we support that, without it being a continuing budget deficit that is drawing down our reserve, is to develop more fee-for-service work and to grow sustainable funding for Saltwise. Part of the reason that Salt, that that would, one of the effects that that effort to grow the Saltwise funding is going to have is that we think we're going to be able to have more revenue than we might need in '25 while we're still on the Fund for Lake Michigan grant funding, while simultaneously kind of building up our more sustainable format and then that's going to carry us into and past the end of the grant funding into '26 and beyond. So those are the themes. The tax levy, just for context, the amount that we get increased by 10% in 2024. And what I'm proposing here is a 6.5% increase of, in 2025, over the 2024 amount, based on increasing costs and growth in the regional challenges related to population growth, housing demand, and climate change. So other revenues, the total revenue increase would be 10.6% to 1.86 million. And components of that, besides the levy increase, include increasing grant revenue by $15,000. That's a fairly modest assumption. That's what we know about right now, and I've built in. That's money bipartisan infrastructure, law funding, that we think we have a high likelihood of getting later this year that's going to carry into next year. Increasing fee-for-service work to a total of $75,000. Again, I feel that that's a little bit conservative. I think we could find ourselves doing more work than that, but that relates, that compares to the $40,000 assumption for this year and last year. And then I talked about Saltwise, increasing Saltwise to total revenue in '25 of $165,000, combination of grants and other sources for that. Expenditures, staffing costs would increase by about 15%, which includes a 3% cost of living increase and two new staff and no interns. And I drafted it that way, but then flagged for discussion this question of interns because I think that we might find ourselves wanting to go back to having interns again for flexibility, not only to, you know, be able to flex and do some things at a relatively low cost with some of our partners, but also to be a resource in the community. To employ interns is a benefit to the community and reinforces our relationship with the university, so that's a factor, too. So the question of interns is something I'd like feedback on, but looking at, just kind of finishing the slide here, combined all of our costs, our costs are about $17,000 less than 2024 because we have some reductions. So all their costs besides staffing would be lower because we have some things that were sort of extras in 2024, including the commission for DMs related to the strategic planning effort and some contract services stuff, including a salary study that are planned for this year that we wouldn't have next year. So that, those are the bottom line issues. The amount for the levy that we're then talking about is, and this is too small for many of you to see, but just over 1.2 million as compared to the current year levy of 1.135 million. So it's an increase of about $74,000 or 6.5% over the prior year. And that really is the main thing we're focused, the main thing we're trying to get to right now, is to decide what we are putting forward as our levy recommendation to be certified this year, this summer.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner McKeever.
So I have two questions. One, if you could give me some context around housing unit tracking, what you're tracking, how you're doing it, what we're going to do with that, is somebody asking for that? And then, did you come up with the 6.5% increase kind of arbitrarily? I'm just thinking of what the rate of inflation is versus this. It seems higher. And wondering, I mean, this is a little vague, I get it, but increasing costs and growth in regional challenges related to population growth, housing demand, and climate change. I mean, what role is CARPSY, do you envision CARPSY playing in that big umbrella? If you can answer that.
Sure. So let me see if I tracked all that. Yes, housing unit tracking, thank you. Just keep queuing these up one at a time, and I'll try to knock them down. The housing unit tracking is something that we're currently engaged in, in sort of an incomplete way, which is that we're trying to track new development as it's coming forward and show where new units are coming online across the region. But we're not doing it in a way what all the community, that allows us to see both the new units and the existing units. This is part of a discussion that we've been having with county staff and some other partners and communities around the region to say, hey, wouldn't it be nice if we could show everyone, here's where the housing units are in the region, and here's how they are changing year to year by location? We can't do that. You'd think we could do that right now. We can't do that right now because multifamily housing is not readily represented from a mapping standpoint. The parcel data doesn't have that information available in a way that we can map it and talk about it spatially. And so we are wanting to continue and take a larger role in collaboration with the county, who is really the holder of some of this information, but also isn't able yet to show it in a way that's really useful to people to track that. So that's what we're talking about. As we talk to our municipal partners, municipal staff, they've been telling us that would be really great if there would be a regional solution to this challenge. That was one. What were your other questions there?
The 6.5% proposed increase and the justification, and how'd you come up with 6.5%?
Yep. So the 6.5% was, I started with a guess as to how much the value of property in the county is going to increase this next year, which is really very much a guess. And I guessed 10%, which is quite a bit, but also consistent with some of the increases we've been seeing lately and some anecdotal information about how individual assessments seem to be jumping right now. So the market is tight, and that's having an effect because so much, you know, majority of property value is tied to the residential market. The function of that market means that values are going up quickly. Our leviness comes in the, part of the context is, you know, what percentage of the levy are we, is coming to CARPSY? And as you are aware, we have statutorily a cap of 0.3% per our creation resolutions by the entities that create us in the county, 0.17%. And as we showed earlier, our, the amount of the levy that is coming to CARPSY to help address the challenges associated with growth around the region has been falling over time as property values have been going up. And so it was, I arrived at that number in part by looking at how much is property value going up, and then what portion of that total value would we be at? And I dropped it some from last year, but kept it at 0.12% to see where that would land, and then built other potential revenue around it to describe a full budget.
Thank you. Commissioner McKeever?
I should know the answer to this, but I don't know who the county executive is right now. Perici.
We don't have one.
Perici stepped down, so somebody's sitting in that chair.
So.
I presume it will be until an election in November or next April.
November. So it is, I think, public knowledge now. It was published in an article that Patrick Miles will be as board chair, nominating himself to be the county, the interim county executive until the fall election.
So the question of the levy and the budget in the past has been an issue for that office. And I guess what I'm asking is, what's your sense of our relationship with that office and their support for our work at this point in time, knowing that we're in transition? And if he's taking that as an acting role, he's got his hands full. He's got a million things and a million priorities, and we may not be very high on that list.
Yep. It's an appropriate question. It's the, you know, the real politics look at this, and I think that, just in a general sense, Patrick Miles is a friend of planning. He's someone who has served on the Zone Inland Regulation Committee in the past and appreciates the value of planning. I have spoken to him a couple of years ago. I have spoken to him a couple of times since I started, and including last week to just kind of check in on how to coordinate this process. At the time, I didn't know for sure, and he wasn't telling me that he was appointing himself, but I'm not surprised to learn that that's the case. And I'll be seeking a meeting with him to have that conversation that you just asked about. And so that's part of this process is that we come up with something to talk about, we talk about it, and then we go vet it with the powers that be. The powers that be are our appointing authorities. And first among equals is the county. So.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Tischler?
Yeah, I guess in regards to the intern, student intern, are you looking at, the intern right now is a graduate student or undergraduate?
It has historically generally been a graduate student. And I think, and I know this from my, you know, my prior work as a consultant, that we're starting to see and consider undergraduates because of changes in the program structure at the university, that there are undergraduate students with a close enough connection to planning that it made sense to consider them, but the default and the assumption is a graduate student.
Okay. I guess the follow-up is, are you pursuing any kind of matching funds? I assume we're talking about the University of Wisconsin-Madison at this.
We are.
Okay.
We are.
Have you pursued any matching funds? I'm not here representing the university, I should just disclose that's my day job, but.
Matching funds from the university or from a grant program?
From the university, it might be, you know, having opportunity to work with CARPSY might be, you know, advantageous for a student, so.
It is, I think. And I might, if Sean thinks he has something to add to this after I talk, I'd welcome him to weigh in, because Sean Higgins has been doing a lot with the planning department in particular. I think the university is usually looking for other sources of funding to help them rather than offering funding that would support us, that come from the university. Like, we're working with them together to find third-party funding that can function in support of student work. And so there's a couple variations of that that are going on right now that aren't interns, but are work-supported through the university.
Right. And again, I'm not speaking for the university here, but they oftentimes, in my observation, they're interested in investing in students. And if you're, if an opportunity to work for CARPSY does lead to employment beyond that, then they become alumni, and that's of interest. So I'll stop talking there before I get myself in trouble.
Anything to add, Sean?
No, just two thumbs up on that statement. That is precisely my. Two thumbs up, Commissioner Tischler. That's precisely my position on it and what I've heard from other faculty members. I don't know which hat I'm supposed to have on right now. Just take them on and off. Yeah, it is a sort of a talent development sort of pipeline thing. And we are looking at that issue and how to fund it.
I believe we actually have had cost sharing with the university for interns at CARPSY. Yes, Commissioner Ruffey?
Thank you. On the intern side, I was once an intern at the Applied Population Lab, which led to my job at the Census Bureau making maps. So I can definitely see this real-world data and thinking about the housing tracking and such. ACS data for small areas takes a long time to gather enough data to be useful. So to have us filling that void, to provide more real-time data to local communities about what's going on, and if we don't have the current staff capacity to be going through that detail, I could definitely see that being helpful to have an intern if we have staff capacity to oversee the intern. So that's kind of my thoughts. I'd be in support of it if we can add that on. But also, we have budget constraints, but to justify it on how we could fill that need in the region, I think would be helpful background information.
A couple, if I could offer a couple other thoughts related to the intern, budgeting for an intern, which I think I would put in as about a $20,000 addition to the budget if we were to do it. One is that we've talked internally amongst staff about desire to diversify our staff racially, culturally. We're not right now, and that internships are often a good way to do that, to try out, meaning to give people a chance to try out the work and for us to try them out. And as, you know, as today's conversation about hiring on interns reveals, it can be a very effective way to lead to employment with the same organization. So that's one aspect that, you know, for which having the ability to hire an intern appeals to me. The other thing I would say is that interns, as I've talked to staff, are a little bit hit or miss in their ability to add value to a process. You know, you usually come out at least even, but sometimes it's, as, you know, we're talking about actually getting work done, it's as much effort for a staff person to manage an intern as it is for them to just do the work that the intern was doing, and then to maybe, you know, correct some things to make it client-ready. And I think we are, I am more confident and comfortable taking the risk of that dynamic, you know, that sometimes, to be fair, it is a burden on staff at times. And I'm more comfortable about that when we have a slightly larger staff where we can distribute that. Right now, I feel that some of our key staff are really stretched thin, and I wouldn't want to put on them an uncertain intern at the moment. But I feel more comfortable with a slightly larger staff than we have right now. Last thought, sorry, I knew I had one more item related to, you know, if we add another 20,000, where does that come from? As I noted in talking about grant funding and fee-for-service work, I feel those were both fairly modest, and I would be comfortable just increasing both of those, one or both of those, to cover that cost and feel confident that we'll find a way to generate that between now and the conclusion of the 25 budget year.
Thank you. Other questions, discussion on 2025 preliminary budget? None. I will, I'll just add, after reviewing bylaw information, it is not too detailed in there about what constitutes a budget amendment. As a matter of fact, it doesn't say anything about what constitutes a budget amendment. It does say that the executive committee shall periodically review the adopted annual budget and to recommend to the commission changes as appropriate. If those changes become a budget amendment, a public hearing is required. We had this discussion last year or the year before regarding whether changes that Agency Director Steinhoff had brought forward for the commission to know about budget progress and adjustments that may be needed. Those did not constitute budget amendments. They were just approved as work adjustments to the operating budget. So it may be helpful for us to have our bylaws more specifically state what a budget amendment is and what it is not. So we may need to bring a bylaw revision before the commission, before the end of the year. In the meantime, we will research that information with the agency attorney and come back next month with either an amendment or an adjustment, but we have to do that fairly quickly in order to get the notice, if it's an amendment.
Yeah, I think we will err on the side of just publishing a notice for a budget amendment to be done with it.
All right. We will move forward then to reports from the executive chairperson and the executive committee. I think we've pretty much.
Number 10.
Oh, sorry, number 10. Update regarding MMSD effluent discharge to Badger Mill Creek. That's right, we have a presentation that we all asked for.
Yeah, I'm back. I don't have anything to present on screen, I just have about 19 pages to read through, so grab a cup of coffee. No, I'm just kidding, one page here. So I did just prepare some comments, so I am just basically going to read from my paper here. So throw something at me if you have any questions along the way, otherwise we can have more discussion at the end here. So, yeah, we had, obviously you guys had some questions, kind of wondering where things are at, so we just prepared this overview of kind of how we got here, what's the current status of things, and then some expectations for the coming months. We've obviously had our finger on this for quite a long time now, but just after our last commission, we did reach out to both DNR and MMSD, had a meeting with each party individually, just to kind of make sure we had, you know, as much of the pieces together as we could. We will be meeting again with both parties, the three of us parties together here, hopefully next week, trying to get that set up. So first, a quick history lesson. I'm going to start in the mid-'90s, it obviously goes further back, but in the mid-'90s, the Verona wastewater treatment plant was decommissioned, and wastewater was sent to the MMSD, the Current Nine Springs facility. Before that, discharge effluent actually did go directly down to Sugar River for a while, went to Badger Mill for a while. There's, again, more history that I'm not going to get into, but taking that water from, yeah, sorry, diverting that effluent, taking the water, sending it over to the other basin, and then sending, but all that took the act of an amendment to Dane County Water Quality Plan, right? So that's what allowed this thing to happen in the first place back in the mid-'90s. More recently, due to changing requirements around phosphorus in Badger Mill Creek and just the requirements MMSD has to hit for that effluent, they have, over the last few years, been considering several different options to meet that lower threshold. Ultimately, in 2023, just last year, the MMSD Commission selected to discontinue flow to Badger Mill Creek as their way of meeting their permit requirements, because if there is no flow, then there's no phosphorus loading. So that's the selected approach that they took. At the end of May 2023, MMSD submitted to DNR their final compliance alternative plan, the FCAP, basically stating what they're planning to do to meet the phosphorus requirements. DNR has since acknowledged that plan. There's no official approval to be had because they're basically, as I understand it, they can't approve the act of doing nothing, which is sort of what's happening by taking the effluent away. So, but a piece of that, though, to kind of make the whole thing work, is to undo the amendment that was done in the '90s. To do that, it requires another amendment to the Dane County Water Quality Plan. That brings us to where we're at now. I just want to mention, too, as part of that FCAP, I think you guys have heard about this, but MMSD has committed $1 million to aid in the health and resiliency of Badger Mill Creek, just as a mitigation effort to, you know, whatever effects may happen from the effluent discharge being taken away. So for the past seven months, MMSD has been facilitating that. Myself and Melissa, we've both been attending those meetings, you know, regularly, trying to just stay up to date and offer our contributions where we can. That is slated to wrap up in about September this year, basically with a list of projects for MMSD to consider and how they're going to take that $1 million and hopefully, you know, do a lot of good with that. Let's see. Based on our conversation with MMSD last week, we understand they intend to submit for the amendment to us for the Dane County Water Quality Plan next month in June. I admit that's a little sooner than we had previously thought and anticipated, so it's a good thing we did, you know, have our meetings with them, so we weren't surprised by anything. So this will set the public hearing for the July meeting, action in August by this body, and then a final decision anticipated by DNR in September. We also understand they will, their WPDS permit is up for renewal at the end of this year, so they'll be working on that at the end of this year, submitting in September or right about there for the new permit. So part of the reasoning for bumping this more quickly than we had originally talked and understood is to kind of get this piece worked out and have some clarity and resolution with it all before they move into what the, you know, permit requirements are going to say and refer to and all that. So next steps, we are expecting an application, like I said, in about a month or so. The general framework, timeline, all that is going to be our typical amendment process. 99% of the time, we're talking about amendments to the, you know, expanding the urban service area, but that is an amendment to the Dane County Water Quality Plan. This will be the same, so it'll take that same structure and outline. Obviously, this is a very different animal, though. We've talked to DNR many times over the last year or so, and they do intend on being much more detailed in, or involved in the review aspect because of that. We are also meeting with MMSD and DNR next week, I mentioned that already, I believe, just to try and kind of confirm all the application materials, the logistics, kind of what pieces really need to be in their application, all that sort of thing. Our role, CARPSY, will be to administer the process, conduct the public hearing and input process, assist with the analysis, and again, like every other amendment to the Water Quality Plan, give a recommendation to DNR to act on. And like other amendments, the decision will be based on the statutory requirements of 283.83-1M, and then looking to see whether the proposal complies with the water quality standards of 281.15. So, that's it. Felt longer than one page, but happy to answer any questions. And I think, too, we can, our thought, myself and Jason talking, that was kind of the high-level update. If there's pieces you guys want to drill into more, we can do that, and I think come with a more complete presentation for you guys, just kind of help understand the full process in next month or in between or whenever, so.
Thank you. Questions for, yes, Commissioner McKeever?
The piece that's intrigued me, and I, this is very helpful, I learned a lot about this from you, thank you. At first blush, when I first heard about it, it was like, okay, you want to take the overload of phosphorus from here and put it over here? How is that improving water quality? It's improving water quality here. What's the impact going to be on Badfish Creek, where I assume the discharge is going to go? And that's the question, is the, from a water quality point of view, from my perspective, that's the piece I'm going to want to know about. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
Yep. No, I hear you. And I think behind the scenes, some of the why and why it's falling the way it is is because the standards in that creek are different than in Badger Mill. They have their adaptive management program already over there, they're able to meet the requirements over there. That's not directly answering your question, I realize that, but that's kind of the why behind the selection of their approach. I think, to answer your question, that's where us and DNR in particular, we're going to be kind of trying to drill into it. They, in their FCAP report, I know they have some analysis, I don't know to the level of detail, but I don't have a great answer right now for you, but I agree with your question. It does, it should take a larger view of the whole thing.
I think that's the question the public's going to ask. And I've heard it from people in the environmental community as well. Well, okay, fine. The alternative being, what would the cost be to MMSD to clean up the discharge to Badger Mill Creek?
And I.
Rather than dump it in Badfish Creek.
And I want to add, too, with that existing adaptive management plan they have over in that watershed, they will be contributing more funding to offset the additional loading. So it's being accounted for by MMSD throwing, you know, contributing more towards that adaptive management effort, so.
It'll be interesting to know what the details of that adaptive management effort are.
And I think it is worth acknowledging that the, you know, the selection that they made to take, to discontinue the discharge to Badger Mill Creek is a financial one. They're meeting, you know, they found a path that meets the regulatory requirements that costs the region the least amount, and that's the one that they brought forward, which is not an unreasonable solution. I mean, most of the region would look at that and is looking at it right now and saying, good work. "Good work, you did the thing that benefits us the most."
Financially.
Financially, and, you know, it's the communities that are, uh, that have Badger Mill Creek in their, you know, that, that are in that watershed that are, um, have mixed opinion about it. Um, I, as, as we've been hearing about it a little bit, the primary objections that we're gonna hear about and probably have some, uh, testimony about at our, the public hearing that we need to hold, um, are gonna be less about, you know, what, what is this doing to Badfish than it is going to be about, what does this do to the flow levels in Badger Mill Creek? And, uh, is it fundamentally changing the nature of, of that water body? And, um, you know, there's some ongoing discussion that we're having to clarify before it comes to hearing, uh, here, uh, to really understand on what are, is the, DNR and, and us on behalf of DNR basing our recommendation to approve or not approve that, that, that change to the Water Quality Plan? And, uh, most directly and specifically, what is the relationship between a change in volume and a change in water quality? Uh, that's really kind of at the heart of, of, of the discussion that we're, we're gonna have. So, um, I think one of the things that we had talked about with MMSD is the option, I think, correct me if I'm misremembering this, Nick, but a, um, uh, a, a presentation to the Commission prior to hearing, so in June, to kind of bring, bring the Commission up to speed. Do you think, did they offer, agree that that, they'd be willing to do that? I don't-
I don't recall if they said they would do that or not.
Okay, yeah, I, thank you for, for that. So I, I shouldn't be promising that, cuz I'm not sure if we've specifically asked that. Uh, we thought, we were talking about that. We didn't realize until we met with them that they wanna bring this thing forward now and, and jump right into the formal process. We were thinking, well, let's do an informal process, kinda get you, you guys up to speed, and then we'll get around to the formal process later. Um, we were chuckling amongst ourselves, um, in, in that meeting, all of us, that, uh, we want them to delay, uh, bringing it forward, uh, so that some of these issues can be worked out and it's gonna be less contentious when it comes to our hearing. Uh, they want to accelerate it so that our hearing happens before their hearing on their, their, their own, um, re-permitting process this fall, uh, which is, you know, I understand their, their motivation to do that. Uh, if they bring forward, if and when they bring forward their materials, uh, we will, we will deal with it as necessary. Our primary objective is to be as well-informed as possible, in particular about what the process requires, uh, and what the decision requires of all of you. We don't want anyone involved to be misinformed or mis, you know, to misinterpret what, what is and is not within your purview as commissioners to act, react to.
Yes, Commissioner Hampton.
How's the DNR feel about the change of water from one, from one watershed to another? Has their view changed? That that's okay now?
I hesitate to speak for the DNR here. Um, I, I guess just generally I'll say that I think a lot of the concerns that were expressed about inter-basin tran- water transfer that you're referring to back in the nineties, um, it, it's not as big of a concern these days. There's greater, um, conservation efforts on water usage, uh, more stormwater is going in the ground, um, versus not, versus running off. It's, it's, I think, I think somebody said it was kind of the concern du jour back then. Um, maybe I made that up too, I'm not sure, I can't remember, but, um, it's, yeah, it, it's less of a concern these days.
Do, do you have any idea how many gallons per day we're talking about?
It is roughly three million gallons per day, which equates to about five, four and a half, five CFS cubic feet per second.
And what will that lower, the base flow?
That, I don't know the-
With that taken away?
I don't know the exact numbers, this will all come out and, uh, you know, their, uh, application and all that, but it will have a significant impact on flow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Nick, um, this item? See, none, we will move forward. Thank you, Nick. And now to reports, uh, reports from Executive Chairperson and Executive Committee. Um, I think we pretty much covered it all within our budget discussions, that was most of what we talked about at Executive Committee meetings, so. I'll turn it over to Jason for the Executive Director Report.
I'll, I'll start with an item that is, uh, arguably sort of, you know, one, one of yours, but, um, I, I think it's not too premature to let you all know that we are expecting, uh, nomination of a, of another commissioner to the Commission to fill the vacant spot, uh, for the City of Madison. Uh, Allison Volk is a, is not yet affirmed by the city, but, um, we're expecting her nomination to be, uh, formalized and approved, um, end of the month or very beginning prior to our meeting next month. And so, uh, adding one person to the, to the Commission, hopefully. Uh, related to that, David and I have been having some discussions about, all right, let's, let's get this Water Quality Committee up and running, and, um, I think our, our plan is to check in with her, uh, in anticipation of her, uh, appointment to see if she'd be willing to serve on that committee. We thought there could be some value to a completely new person to this, to this issue, to see it with fresh eyes. Uh, I don't know if, you, you wanna say anything more about that?
And, uh, just regarding, uh, Allison Volk, I actually, uh, recruited her. Um, don't know her personally, but I saw that she had served on, uh, city committees in the past related to farmland preservation. Thought that was a good vantage point to have for the Commission. Uh, approached her and she was interested enough to follow up with me to find out why the city hadn't contacted her. Um, it took many months for that, uh, to occur, but is now proceeding, and, uh, I look forward to having her join us, and it sounds like that appointment may take place this month yet.
Thank you. So, uh, just hitting some, uh, what I consider high points from the, um, the Executive Director's Report here. Uh, education, uh, the, uh, joint CARPSY MCO webinar, uh, series continues, and the next one is one that we're leading on local and regional tree, tree canopy initiatives. And, uh, that's gonna be on May twenty-ninth, uh, twelve o'clock to one o'clock. And, uh, we're featuring as the primary speaker Jay Weiss, who is the founder of the Cambridge Tree Project, uh, to talk about, um, the eleven hundred trees that they've planted without public funds in Cambridge in the past, uh, in the past twenty years. Uh, so just kind of highlighting, uh, I think, I'm expecting Matt's gonna talk a little bit more about all the things that CARPSY is involved in related to tree canopy work, but, um, Mr. Weiss is gonna be the focus of that webinar. Uh, salt-wise, Allison has been active as always. Uh, she's been at some public events in Wausau, uh, here in Madison at the Garber Feed Mill, at the, uh, American Public Works Association Conference in Madison. Uh, and she also went to the, um, American Public Works Association Snow Conference in Kansas City, uh, which, uh, sort of surprisingly, sort of not, turned out to be a great opportunity for building better connection with City of Madison staff. So you leave the state to show your commitment and end up spending some time with people in your own backyard and making some stronger connections for our region.
Yeah, and for the record, she also came to District Eleven and gave a presentation, so we are very grateful.
Yes. Uh, Allison's kind of, uh, seems at times that she's everywhere all the time, and, uh, yes, she's doing things, uh, out of our region and also very active in our region, uh, with the Saltwise, uh, message and program. Um, we talked earlier tonight about the Environmental Corridor Report. Uh, this is a document that was last updated in nineteen ninety-six. And, uh, Melissa has, uh, been able to elevate that to the top of her list and has been working on that to run it through, um, various partners, especially entities at the, at the county. Um, but partners in the region to get that updated, to better define some things that are unclear, to talk more about the stewardship areas, and I think this update process is revealing, uh, e- even more than we, that we can do, I think, to, uh, respectively at the, by the county and CARPSY, uh, explain, uh, certain identifications on county and CARPSY maps about lands that would be desirable to protect. Um, and, and so I think we're going to continue to refine that. But having an updated, um, Environmental Corridors Report is, uh, is a good step for our, improving our, our toolbox and our messaging. Skipping down to, uh, regional climate resilience planning and our various, uh, tree canopy work, I would note that we have identified today as our official go-live date, uh, for the Growing Shade Tool. I know we've been talking about it for a long time. You probably think, well, it's already live, isn't it? In truth, we've been, uh, not publicizing it because we've been working with partners to, uh, refine it and to involve them in that refinement. And, um, while people are still encouraging certain further refinements, uh, we are also going public with it and, um, uh, having it be a public tool available for anyone's use as we continue to talk about ways that it can be improved. Um, we'll learn more as people actually use it. So, uh, look for, for more on that. Uh, we're not doing a very broad splash release, um, because it's gonna be a little bit more of a soft, soft launch, but still, it's, it's out there and it's public and, and available for use. Um, the link is in the, in the document. Then finally, I'm just gonna tick through, I've got notes on many of our partners and things they're doing, things we're doing with them. So, uh, the MPO's update is in here, and just picking out a few things in there, uh, they're working on the Transit Development Plan and the, uh, Active Transportation Plan, uh, to, uh, update the current bike plan, uh, for the region, and, uh, so, uh, that's some of what's keeping them busy right now. And, um, you know, I would also comment, kind of related to the, the MPO and transportation, there's, feels like there's a lot of transportation planning work going on in the region right now. Um, if, if you've got your ear to the ground, you're aware that there's long-range planning going on for the Belt Line, there's long-range planning going on for the ninety ninety-four corridor, we talked about that last month. Um, we, we did provide a, uh, some feedback on that process to the DOT just indicating, uh, support for the new interchanges that are suggested and pointing out where they may need environmental mapping amendments, uh, connected to that. So that's it on the, uh, on the MPO and transportation. Uh, regarding housing, yeah, go ahead.
Did you and David get my email about the Belt Line piece?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and my apologies for not, for not replying. I did attend the, the, the meeting that, uh, you, you were invited to there, and, uh, I think share your reaction that you, there's not a whole lot of opportunity to add value to that process,
I have a mind to act.
Right now? So, um, I, I appreciate that they're doing it. Um, now, just to comment on that Belt Line process, uh, the, the regional, you know, the, the partners in the region that were engaged in that process were pretty clear about not really wanting more lanes in general and appreciating the multimodal and bike-ped improvements. And the DOT is saying, you know, we hear you, um, but we're also going, you, you, you should expect to see more lanes be in the evaluation next time this comes around.
For the rest of you, uh, two or three years ago, Steve asked me to serve on this Belt Line Planning Committee through DOT. My qualification was that I lived in Monona, I was closest to the Belt Line than anybody else on the Commission. That's what he said. I went to a couple of meetings and I just became convinced that they already had their minds made up and that there was very little value to add, as you pointed. So when they, a while back, invited me to another meeting, I wrote to David and, and Jason and said, "I don't wanna do this, you guys wanna do it, but I don't think it's worth my time, or our time, frankly." So, I bailed out.
Yeah, and thank you, thank you for that communication. Apologies, I didn't follow up with you on that. And I'd say, right now, I'm in the mode of saying yes to everything I can to figure out, what's our role, uh, where do we have influence, where do we not?
See, I'm retired, I'm in the mode of saying no to everything.
So, um, you know, it's, and it's good, for, for, at a staff level, it's good for us to be aware of, uh, those long-range things that other entities are talking about, that, that could happen.
I agree, absolutely.
So, um, I think we'll continue to engage, but, um, I, we'll try to modulate and, and, uh, guide the investment of your time appropriately as to how we best apply. And, you know, that'll be the topic of next month's, or the, the July Strategic Planning Effort is, how are your energies best applied as commissioners? A few other partner notes, the Regional Housing Strategy has been, uh, released. There was a big event at, uh, the Lion's Energy Center last week, a lot of people attending, and, um, uh, county staff and others are now, um, you know, kind of working on implementation. County is hiring in a, a staff planner to focus on, on housing, uh, policy and working with communities on, uh, housing-related zoning, uh, ordinances in particular, I think is one of, one of the intended purposes of that hire. Um, and so we're expecting to see more going on. Uh, I think we're gonna see many different efforts of many types over the coming years related to housing and, um, try to stay up to date.
Were you or other staff at that event?
Yes, I was there.
Okay. Actually, I was kind of disappointed that, that as commissioners, we didn't know about it, given that we'd talked about it. I, I kind of was hoping, I knew it was gonna be announced at some point. I thought it would've been a nice place for commissioners to show their faces.
Yeah, fair, fair point, and I, uh, could have and should have, uh, announced it to the Commission. Thank you for pointing that out. Under the, the topic of the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change is sort of my, uh, place to insert notification that, uh, CARPSY is a bronze, uh, Seoul Smart awardee or, or designee. Uh, so we are, uh, one of a number of entities in the county now that are certified as, under the Seoul Smart Program, uh, for our efforts to support and enable and facilitate investment in, uh, solar energy, uh, infrastructure. And so, uh, thank you to Caitlin for her efforts to make that happen on behalf of CARPSY, and I would say, more importantly, to be part of the process, uh, along with Kathy Coons at the county, to help a bunch of municipalities seek that designation and act, and make improvements that are affecting the ability of residents and property owners to invest in solar energy in the, in the communities. Uh, working with planning and development, we already talked about how we're coordinating with them on some mapping and spatial data initiatives, uh, so that work continues. MadRep, you approved, um, in the consent agenda, our agreement to, um, uh, work with, uh, MadRep on mapping stuff, and we're also expecting the opportunity to, uh, partner with them on some grant-funded work for economic, uh, some economic recovery funding and planning in the region. And so, um, more on that as we learn more, but we're, we're in some conversations about them on helping to, to scope that and prepare for a grant application that they would lead. Uh, MMSD, we've talked about, I don't know that we need to say a whole lot more about that. Uh, we're still meeting, have a meeting to be, to schedule with them to talk about the full list of things on which we overlap. Uh, I added a couple to the list at the bottom here that I haven't previously talked about. Um, one is the Madison Area Builders Association, which I, uh, consider to be a, a partner entity in that they are doing the work that, uh, is, uh, you know, expanding, improving, revising the, the built environment in the region. And, um, I met with them, uh, on May first to kind of introduce myself, uh, talk about my role and our role in the region and to, um, establish ongoing dialogue with, with that entity. And, uh, I also met recently with Angela West Blank, the Executive Director of Groundswell, to establish that connection, get to know Angela, and, um, work toward more collaboration and communication between CARPSY and Groundswell so that we can figure out how to bring, and Groundswell really is the leading entity for land conservation in the region, and as we talk about stewardship areas and finding ways to protect areas that don't have regulatory protections, um, they're, they're a critical player that we want to, uh, reinforce and utilize and help to apply across the region, I think.
That's everything I wanted to point out. Questions? Yes, Commissioner Darrell.
I'm just wondering, um, if, um, we're going to try to find somebody to be a liaison with, um, our transportation buddies? our transportation buddies? I mean, I know the staffs still have a close relationship, because you share facilities, but unfortunately, I don't see a member from CARPSY at those meetings.
So, if I could, I'll take the first crack at that to say that we do have a, we do have a commissioner or board member in common, Alda Harrington McKinney, who hasn't been present much with CARPSY, but has been asked if she wants to continue with the commission, and as she does, so I'll be reaching out to her again to talk about that and affirm that she's able to participate, and we'll also ask her about if and how she can serve in a liaison role between the two, and what she, and see what she has to say about that. But officially, we do, practically, we don't at the moment, pending her activity in those dual roles.
I know a lot about what they do, so, because I've been involved in some of their projects and stuff, so I know how valuable it is to have that, more than just the little list of things that are going on, so, just wanted to bring it up.
Just for, for point of clarification, the Transportation Commission Committee you're talking about, that's not the city one, I mean, I know Barbara serves on the city transportation.
It's the MPO.
You're talking about the MPO? Okay, all right.
Yep. All right, any further questions for our Executive Director?
I would just add, as a final note, that I appreciate the grace you offer us as we stumble through a few things that we aren't quite getting right yet, but we're figuring it out, getting a little better every month.
Item 12, future agenda items, if there are items Commissioners wish to bring forward for consideration on our future agenda, you can speak now, or contact us later. Commissioner Hampton?
Well, with the EPA adding those two PFAS to their long list, will that have any effect on what we have to do?
I'm not sure. Nick, do you have thoughts on that? You know, PFAS being-
Regulated as a pollutant.
Also unsure.
I believe you need to learn more from DNR about that, I think.
I have two items to question the commission on. One is to affirm that you would like the City of Madison Water Utility to present on the question of well drawdown. We are tentatively planned, planning with them to have them present at the June meeting on that topic. Looks like that's a yes, just reaffirming what you already said, really. The other is, so, to the point of collaboration, liaising with the MPO, I was talking to the MPO Executive Director, Alexander Andros, about whether and when I should go to an MPO meeting, or she should come to one of our meetings, and we decided we would each ask our bodies whether there'd be interest in having the other executive director come, make a brief presentation about what the other agency is up to, and respond to questions that you may have. If you are so interested, I'll look to set that up with her for, say, July or August.
I am.
Okay. That's it from me, on that.
All right, I think we seek one final motion.
Motion to adjourn, Richardson.
Motion by Richardson, second by Hampton, all in favor of adjournment.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for a long day. We'll see you next month.